I'm going to first notify you how the hearing will be held. This hearing is, I'll give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the members. This is Lisa Normandin, the Board Secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, and Robert Kedl. The way we will do is, Lisa, we'll read the application and any other submitted communications, then the applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submittal of additional documents. You please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period, and it's, again, if there is anyone from the public, they will come forward, give their name and address, and address all comments and questions to the Board. This is a requirement for a special permit that the Board will deliberate on. They are, number one, that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic, flow congestion, danger of fire, explosion, are the reasons; that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood; that it would be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use; and that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I will ask, Lisa, to please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Martha McDonald of 221 Goodrich Street in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. The applicant respectfully requests a special permit under Section 7.3, nonconforming uses, to extend the use of an existing lawfully nonconforming driveway into a common driveway for use by two dwellings on individual lots. The existing driveway is nonconforming to the requirements of Section 64(c)(2)D, and that portion of the driveway has a grade in excess of 12 percent. The existing driveway is proposed to serve as a driveway access to both the existing dwelling and a new house that the applicant will be building. No application was submitted to the building inspector. At a November 13, 2017, meeting with the planning board for approval of the common driveway, the Board indicated that they could not approve the use because the existing driveway does not conform with Section 64(c)(2)D of the bylaw. The Board recommended that some action would be needed by the Board of Appeals. After consultation with the building inspector, it was agreed that the use of the existing driveway is considered an extension of a lawfully nonconforming use, and a special permit would be required from the Board of Appeals. At that meeting, the planning board did vote positively to allow the location of the existing driveway for use as a common drive under Section 64(5)k(2). The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 7.3. The street address is 221 Goodrich Street, lots 4 and 5. Assessor's map and parcel, map 120, parcel 8. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Martha A. McDonald of 221 Goodrich Street in Lunenburg, and it's recorded in Land Court Certificate Number 1432, Document 6832. So the special permit questions and answers are as follows. The applicant should provide the Board with information that shows that the proposed use, use, okay, A, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic? The proposed action involves the use of an existing driveway to the dwelling at 221 Goodrich Street to serve as a common driveway to an additional dwelling at that property. An A&R plan attached was previously approved by the planning board to divide the existing property into two lots. The existing driveway will serve as access to the new dwelling as shown on the attached driveway plan. The proposed use does not require any modification to the existing driveway, and the extension of the existing use will serve only one additional dwelling. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic, congestion, danger of fire, or explosion. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? As noted above, the proposed action would allow the existing driveway to be used as a common drive for two homes, the existing dwelling and home to be built. Common drives are allowed under the bylaw to serve two dwellings and are common in town. As such, the action will have no material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order or sightliness if in open use? As the proposed action involves a typical residential use, the driveway and use of the land will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness. The applicant purchased the property in 1994 and has lived there and maintained it ever since, is proposing to build a new house at the property, and is selling the existing house. It is expected that the property will be carefully maintained as has been under the applicant's continuing ownership. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? As the proposed action involves a typical residential use, there will be no noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts that would be detrimental to the normal use of adjacent properties. The applicant is requesting that the Board allow the extension of the use of her existing nonconforming driveway as a common drive to serve as access to both the existing house and a new house to be built by her. The driveway is nonconforming as a portion of the driveway exceeds a grade of 12 percent. As shown on the attached plan, the driveway grade ranges between 12 and 15.6 over approximately 130 feet of the driveway before the new house. The first 210 feet of the driveway from Goodrich Street is less than 12 percent and will allow a run-up area for vehicles using the driveway to get to the new house. The use of the existing driveway versus construction of a new separate driveway for the house is preferred, given the substantial clearing, grading, earthwork, and cost required to construct a driveway that meets the 12 percent requirement. The new driveway associated with the new house complies with this requirement. The applicant has owned the property since 1994 with no issues with the existing drive. That signed November 30 by Martha McDonald of 221 Goodrich Street. Attached is a list of abutters, a site plan from the assessor's office, the field card from the assessor's office, a copy of the deed, and the plan showing the subdivision. I also received a note from the Conservation Commission, said that they will need to file a request for determination with the Conservation Commission, and the fire department gave us a note. "This is an existing nonconforming driveway. Though it is above the acceptable grade, it is generally manageable for fire department apparatus. I would suggest that consideration be given to having the driveway resurfaced at least to the point of the new home. Current driveway has patches in multiple places and shows signs of deterioration. I'm sure this will be accelerated with additional vehicle traffic." And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant to speak to the petition.
Hi, good evening. My name is Robert Oliver. I'm Miss McDonald's engineer on the project. We've handled both the subdivision of the property, the design of septic systems on the property, as well as the application to your Board for this special permit. I think Lisa pretty much went through everything I had to say as far as the application is concerned. Simply put, we're looking to reuse the existing driveway as a common driveway to serve one additional house that you see on the plan there. The driveway is longer, it continues much further up onto the hill to Miss McDonald's current home. She plans on building the new home for herself and selling the existing home. So as noted, the special permit's required for its existing nonconforming use in that the driveway grade exceeds the 12 percent that's found in Section 6.4(c)(2)D of the bylaw. So as such, the planning board, we visited them first, they approved the location of the common driveway, but deferred us to the Board of Appeals simply due to the fact that the grade on the driveway exceeds the 12 percent. And I guess they were correct in discussing it with the building inspector. Special permit's required for the extension of the nonconforming use, the extension being serving an additional house off of that driveway. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do you just, while you're spray here, if you can take the mic with you, go over to the drawing. Now, the new house is the, when you're coming up, it's the shorter section to the right.
So here's Goodrich Street. This is the existing driveway, which comes up and continues on. On my smaller scale plan here, that's the same driveway up to here, continuing on up to the existing house. So this is the new house. There's a new piece of driveway off of the elbow of the existing drive. This meets current standards, so there's nothing required for that. Essentially, the grade starts to exceed 12 percent in about this area to about this area. So in my application, we state that there's approximately, approximately 130 feet of that driveway that exceeds the 12 percent.
That's that one section.
That's that section right through here. So this whole piece up to about here is under the 12 percent. And then it's a little bit less as you turn the corner. So right through here is the portion that exceeds the 12 percent.
And you say the new section will be under 12?
Yeah, this is probably 3 or 4 percent, so relatively flat.
Relatively flat. Okay, thank you. And with that, I don't want to ask the questions from the Board.
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman. What's the length of the driveway from Goodrich Street to the new proposed dwelling? How many feet?
Where the new driveway hits the elbow, it's roughly 370 feet.
And you looked at different alternatives?
I did. Essentially, we would require a driveway similar to what we already have.
To get up there.
To get up there, with a lot of clearing, a lot of earthwork, a lot of expense. That's why this is the preferred method.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think that the section that's referenced in the application is incorrect. I think it's actually referenced at 643b4, because that's, when it talks about driveways and references, says the maximum grade of any outdoor driveway is 12 percent. I couldn't find the reference that was sectioned in the application. So I think the correct is 6.43b, Section 4. I'm a little confused by that myself, Mr. Chairman. So, just for the record.
Yes, and would you change that, just for the record?
Yes. 643b?
Yep, 4. That refers to the maximum grade of any outdoor driveway is 12 percent.
Two, three, four.
I just couldn't find the other section.
Right, no, it didn't exist.
You are correct.
I was using the codified version online.
Oh, maybe that's why, so, yeah.
Perhaps the numbering is slightly different.
Perhaps.
Yeah.
I just couldn't find it in the book. I did find it.
There is definitely a section that calls out the 12 percent.
Right. That's what I looked for.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I get, Mr. Chairman. When was this driveway originally constructed?
It's quite old. Any idea, Martha, when the driveway was originally built?
Has to be 40 years or more.
Oh, before zoning?
Probably yes.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at. So, I mean, back then, you could do whatever you want, basically.
Right.
And they just did whatever was the easiest path to get up to the house. That's the one that's up on the edge there.
Yep.
Right. I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question about the, rather more for the Board, whether these two lots merge into one, so that they're putting two, trying to put two lots, two houses on one lot.
I think the planning board subdivided.
Right, they split it. They got the original split it into two separate lots.
Yeah, it's all on the one lot. Now two separate lots, as the planning board.
So how would you address the fire chief's concern about the driveway being graded? That's why I was asking you about the 370 feet from Goodrich to the new dwelling.
Yeah, I think we were talking about this real quickly, as far as resurfacing it. That's your plan?
As soon as my house is, the new house is completed and all the equipment is done going up and down the driveway, I will definitely be resurfacing from the street up to the new house.
Okay, so I think that might be a condition.
Want to condition that?
Yeah, I would say. I mean, if that's a fire chief's.
Yeah. Do you have any issues with that being a condition?
Assuming I have time, you know, so many months after the petition of the new house and the sale of my existing house, the new owner of my existing house will also be party to this. But I was going to make it part of the, an agreement with myself and the new, the person who buys my existing house, that we redo the driveway.
Okay.
Could you ask her to come to the mic?
Yeah, you would have to come to the mic to speak.
Well, wait. Why do you need to come to the mic?
Yeah, you should come to the mic and speak.
See, we can hear you in this room. The people at home cannot hear you unless you.
Martha McDonald, 221 Goodrich Street. So as far as addressing the deteriorated driveway, I do plan on selling my existing house and the 8.75 acres, and when that is sold and my new house is completed, I'll work with the new owner of the existing house to repave the driveway, because it will be a shared driveway.
Right.
But I clearly want that to be part of the purchase of the new house, that we, the purchase of my existing house, we agree to redo the driveway.
Okay. And what would you consider a reasonable amount of time after the completion of the new house?
Well, it would depend on the season that my new house is completed, because they probably, if, you know, if my new house is completed by June, I could have it done by, like, Octo, within three months. If my new house didn't get completed until next November, I would be having to wait until spring.
Yeah, I think that, I think that when, if we could condition it, when if it's, you know, in the positive, that we could give you a year or eighteen months.
A year would definitely give me the full cycle.
As a condition. That's up to the Board.
Yeah, I mean, or excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I can understand conditioning the applicant, but not the potential purchaser of the new house. We have no power over that person.
No, we would just condition it in this particular condition.
Right. But we're talking about the part that's going to be shared.
The part that's going to be shared, yeah. We're not, we're not really addressing that. That's what the applicant wants, but that's really not what, we can't condition that. They got to come to an agreement. We can just condition her that it has to be.
Right, right, no, that's what I'm saying. So I don't see how we could say, well, okay, once you and the purchase of your property, you know, and yada, yada, I could say we could, you know, make her do it, but I don't see how we could extend that to the.
Oh, you can make it, because the fire department, you know, is requesting that it be, because apparently the driveway.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman.
We can make it at least to the first house, which is her.
Oh, right, right, right. Right, but I think we have to put that on the applicant.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it'll be my responsibility.
That's there, right, exactly.
And I think what you mentioned is it's going to be part of the purchase of the house, but that's, again, up to them, not up to us.
Right. But what we're saying is, we're going to make you pave the first section up to your house.
Right, and I'll take responsibility for making sure that stretch is paved and work with the new owners to.
Right. Well, you might want to look at, gee, am I going to get more money selling the house if the driveway's fixed when I'm trying to sell it, versus I'm trying to sell it now and, oh, by the way, you're going to have to fix the driveway, just.
Right, but as far as the machinery going up and down, I figured, I don't know how much wear and tear that will be, but I just thought logically you waited until that was done before you do spend money on new paving because of those machines and the size and whatnot.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying you can't compel the owner of your new house to then pave it. What if they want to do it five years later, and they're going to drive all that machinery up your driveway to get to their driveway?
Right.
So, that's all.
No, I'll have to deal with it regardless on my own, whether they are on board or not.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Have you already written an easement into their yard or your present yard to allow the roadway for you, or?
Yeah, the A&R plan has an easement for a shared driveway, common driveway. It does need to be altered slightly, just based on where we end up putting the house in, but, yeah, there will be an easement finalized and in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? And I'll cut off discussion from the Board. I don't think they're here for this, but if anybody has any public comment, they can please come forward. No, no, no public comment. Okay, with that, then I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Excuse me.
Grant the petition as requested with a modification of the section.
Yeah, Lisa has already corrected that.
643b4.
Okay.
And is there a second?
I'll second it, but we have to put the condition there that the, right, the driveway gets paved after said time, after the applicant sold their house.
I think you want to put a time, so if you want to say, whatever.
Within a year after.
One year after completion of the new dwelling?
Yeah, I would go with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes? Okay, so that would be a condition? No objections? Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
With that, it's approved. Good luck with your new driveway and your new house.
Yep. You're welcome.
Good night.
Pretty good. You find, you find that.
We have new books. It's called The Code of Lunenburg, by law, anymore, so I got to get all new books. I printed one for Bob, but I forgot it. So all these are gone. Everything's changed.
Oh, is that why?
All the numbers have changed.
Really?
Oh. This is like a 250, it's so weird. It's online. So I, we get the book, I give it to Gary, throws it on the shelf, and then I see the planning board has their, are we on recess or are we live?
Oh, it says we're on air.
Do you want to?
I believe we are.
Yeah, we could recess for about five minutes till the next case. Okay, I'm going to... First, I have some things I got to go through, so first I have to give you a notification. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce the members of the board. This is Lisa Normandin, the board secretary. I'm Al Gravel. This is Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, and Robert Cadel. The way it will be done is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you are at the mic. There will be a public comment period. Again, if you would like to speak, please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberation. There are certain requirements, and this is a special permit, the very dimensional requirements. So the findings are: The permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such a building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with a God to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And the board may impose any conditions deemed necessary to achieve the purpose of this bylaw. With that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is David Ossoff, 46 Fire Road 12 in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby petitions as follows: Seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to allow an addition 11 feet from Fire Road 12 where 40 feet is required. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 8321B4. The street address is 46 Fire Road 12 in Lunenburg, assessors map 137, lot 17. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is David Ossoff, 46 Fire Road 12 in Lunenburg, and the deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 6351, Page 36, and recorded January 3, 2007. Special permit questions are as follows. A: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? A: The prepared map and site layout, although prepared for a previous retaining wall and drainage system project in 2012, contains a highly detailed, scaled, and topographic map of our land, including buildings and location of the septic system adjacent property and the road. I have added the proposed addition and pencil according to the 1-inch equals 10 scale of the site layout. The soil conditions are highly sandy. The proposed addition foundation will be dug to the same depth as the current foundation with predominantly the same topography. B: Will the action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities in the neighborhood? B: A literal enforcement of the provisions of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial and otherwise, as the current house is simply not sufficient for adults. The master bedroom is not large enough for two adults. There are no closets. The kitchen and bathroom are in dire need of renovations, and the severe constrictions of our current construction make it difficult to do these renovations outside of creating additional reasonable space. There is also currently only a small spiral staircase linking the two floors from within. Our proposed construction includes a six-foot bump out for construction of a full staircase. The proposed addition will address these issues at a far more reasonable cost than that of our relocating. C: Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? Desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good for the following reasons. Desirable relief may... Fire Road 12 is a private fire road with extremely limited traffic flow. There are several homes on our Fire Road 12 that are 10 feet or less from the road, much closer than the road than we are proposing for this addition. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? I think these were answered as a variance and not special permit, but I'll go on. The variance desired may be granted without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent or purpose of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw. Fire Road 12 is a small peninsula surrounded by wetlands with about a dozen houses. In the 22 years I have resided there, nearly all property owners have sought and been granted permits and variances to build additions or demo or rebuild their properties from, in many cases, what were camps or older summer residence to full-time residential properties. Each property owner has a private well and septic system and has a private road with limited town services. These prior proposed construction and improvements on Fire Road 12 have served to increase our taxable property values without placing any further burdens on the town's resources. And that's signed November 30, 2017, by David Ossoff of 46 Fire Road 12. The... There is a letter from the building commissioner, Gary Rhodes. It says, "Mr. Ossoff is requesting a special permit to construct an addition to the existing dwelling. The addition will be approximately 11 feet from Fire Road 12 layout. Fire Road 12 is a right-of-way and therefore provides frontage for the parcel. A minimum of 40-foot setback would be required. A special permit would be required prior to a building permit." And there's a copy of the field card attached, a site plan from the assessors' office, a list of abutters, and the proposed construction and site layout. I also received a memo from the Board of Health, reviewed their file, said the house must remain a two-bedroom, four-room dwelling. A floor plan must be reviewed by the Board of Health prior to the issuance of a building permit. Two, the water line for the house may be in the area of the proposed dwelling. Three, newly created basement area is not to be living space unless the total room count of the house complies with number one above." And that's signed by Jim Giriffey from the Lunenburg Board of Health. The conservation said they will need to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission if this is granted tonight. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or his representative up to speak to the application.
Absolutely.
I'm David Ossoff. I'm the homeowner.
I'm Renee Boyne. I live with him.
I'm Tom Schultz. I'm hoping to build the addition.
Okay. Yes, the... Yes, those questions were answered, thinking that I was answering the questions for the variance.
Okay.
Our question... One question I had is that it says our current dwelling has four rooms and two bedrooms, whereas actually we have one bedroom upstairs. There is a finished room downstairs that serves as a music room and a studio and storage, and we have storage everywhere. Our entire basement is just full of storage because we have no closets. So... And the four bedrooms, the upstairs is a total open area concept. It's basically one big room with a very small bedroom off to the side that measures, would you say, 10 by...
Oh, it's 10 by 10.
10 by 10.
We're a little unclear on the classification that says we currently have two bedrooms, because we only have one. And the rest of the upstairs, what we call the upstairs, it's the main floor of the house, it's just a kitchen and a living room area and all open concepts. So I wasn't sure about the total room count that's listed on this report here. I might have to check with Jim Giriffey about that. Okay, so Tom had prepared these floor plans to date.
You do have a copy of the floor plans, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So is there any other thing you would like to add? Do you think you've pretty much covered everything?
Well, it's going to maintain the one-bedroom status on the top floor. This is going to maintain the open area concept in the living room. The kitchen's going to stick out a little bit further into like the new addition, but it still really comes down to two main rooms and a small kitchen, so...
Yeah, I mean, the basement is... We didn't have any plan for the new basement at this point. I was hoping to get some office space out of it eventually, but we haven't put together a floor plan for the basement at this point.
Okay. Then I'll open up the questions to the board.
So essentially, you're saying the... If we look at this plan, it's totally open. There'll be no bedrooms in that space?
In that space right here, yes.
And it'll still just be one bedroom?
Yes.
The addition will be a bedroom?
Exactly.
Period.
Exactly.
With a full cellar unfinished at this point in time.
Yes.
Renovations of the current kitchen and bathroom.
Thank you.
Was this the same size when you moved in? Have you explained it at all?
It hasn't changed, no.
It's the same?
Yeah.
And so I noticed in your application, you said that owing to sandy soil conditions, it was small.
Is what?
Why are the sandy soil conditions, I guess, different for your house than the others in the area?
I'm not sure it is. Or is it just sandy?
We're right on the water on Lake Shirley, and most of the soil around our property is sand, so we can't grow.
We can't really grow a yard.
We can't plant or grow most things there.
But you're not looking for anything that has to do with growing?
No.
Yeah, we've tried many times and failed. There's only one small part of the yard that we can grow some bushes in.
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So your plot plan here that you were using, do you have a full-size plan? Is that an architectural?
Yep.
Yes.
It's always stamped.
Well, this... Yeah, this plan was originally drawn up for another project a few years ago where we put up the retaining wall system in the back.
Okay.
But I used it because it was a scaled map.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Could you submit... Will you submit a copy of that to Lisa?
Sure.
Yes.
Just for the record. And then, so the other questions I had, so I went down to the site. Is that the wooden stakes out in the front, is that where you're attempting to build out to?
Yes.
And how many residents past you, past your house going towards the water, towards the end of the peninsula? Is there four or five houses at the end?
There's Claire's, there's Teresa's, there's...
The Barubis.
The Barubis, there's the...
Jill and Diane.
Jill and Diane.
It's tight down there.
It is.
I think I turned around, one maybe a house after you, and kind of turned around and then...
There's a fair distance between us and the next house down, but then they're close together after that for the next four houses.
And you have a retaining wall, right, in the front of your road?
Yes, we have a retaining wall.
So even if you're coming out 11 feet, it's really not going to impact anything because you have a retaining wall along the road, correct?
Oh, we don't have it along the road. We're building that along the road.
Well, we took out the front of this retaining wall shown on the map when we had a new well system installed a few years ago.
Okay.
So that's going to be rebuilt after the... I mean, after this proposed addition is complete, and it'll be tied back into what's left of both sides of the wall.
So the retaining wall that's on the stamped plan is no longer there because you had to put the well?
The front section isn't.
The front section.
Okay, I couldn't... I don't remember. I mean, it's snowing out, and I don't know if they had the banks or anything like that. I just remember it was... I saw the stakes.
Yes. That is, yes. The sides are still there, and the neighbor Gordon Wu has... He put up the side on the right side of the map, and the plan is to tie the wall into his when we're done. The other discrepancy was the 11 feet. I measured it out to the pavement, but the building department told me it was 11 feet to the right-of-way. Is that correct? Which is, I guess, the black line that's inside of the wall shown on the map. So it's actually about 15 feet to the pavement.
It's just the angle that it was measured on from the building inspector, the way he measures and the way you measure.
Yeah.
So it's really just the difference in the angle.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. What are the dimensions of the existing house?
Existing house is 37... It's 37 and a half by 18, I believe.
And the distance from the closest point to the property line? Do you know what that number is?
Of the current house?
Yeah.
Well, it would be... I guess it would be the 11 plus the 20. So it'd be about 30, low 30s.
Well, you got the curve there, so I suspect it's got to be less than the 31 you're thinking. You know the road and your retaining wall curves? It gets closer to that corner, left-hand corner of the house?
Right. Yeah, I haven't measured the distance right from the house to there. I measured from the outside corner of what we're proposing to the street.
Just by thinking being that normally I don't look favorably on allowing something to become even more non-conforming than it currently is. So what you have here is perfectly legal, but the addition now getting closer to the property line or the right-of-way, as the building inspector says, is making the condition of nonconformity even worse. And I just wanted to point that out to you.
But it's not out of... It's still conforming with what we have in the neighborhood. There are other houses in the neighborhood that are...
I'm just going by your particular circumstances. Every circumstance is different. I don't know... The other houses, perhaps they went up in the existing footprint to what... I don't know. I'm just saying that from what you're showing me here, in order for me to allow you to put this addition on, it's going to make your lot even more nonconforming. That's just what I'm trying to point out.
We're very... We have very limited options about what we can do to increase our space.
Right, no, I can see that. 18 feet wide is very narrow for a house.
Right, we can't go back. We can't add on to the back because we're on the waterfront. And we have the septic on one side, and we have the well system on the other side in the corner of the property.
So you say that due to the topography of the land, that's really your only option is to build out?
It is our only option. It is.
We weren't planning on trying to knock down and rebuild. We weren't trying to do something of that scope.
Right. Did you put any thought to coming off to the right-hand side of your house to make it longer?
We can't because the property line over there, I mean, it would come out like six feet budding out, but we're still... Our property line is very close to our neighbor's house.
I'm just looking by what I see here. I mean, I see you show the six feet for the bump out.
Yeah.
So it's got to be another 12, 18, 22, 24 feet to the property line from where you have the six-foot dimension off the side of the house where you want to put the stairway?
I suppose that would be an option, though. We haven't considered that. There is quite... We are at a high grade.
Yeah.
And so if you go in that direction towards the neighbor, it's probably... probably a 45-degree angle in the topography of the land.
Does it go up or down?
Down.
So, and... So you're at a little knoll here.
What's that?
So you're at a little knoll here?
Basically, yes.
Houses?
Yeah.
Yeah, our house is, it's pretty high up. The other, the other, the houses next to us both are at a much lower grade than we are, and the foundation is currently built into the hill where one side of it is at, at street level and the other side is underground.
You have a question?
I'm good. I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just look here. On that, on the right-of-way or the fire road 12, the other houses, how close to the fire road are most of the homes on that, that road?
Oh, how close are the houses?
In other words, how far back are the homes? Most of the homes?
60 Fire Road 12 is within nine feet of the road. We measured it because I'm very best friends with her, and we're checking it out. The Spatter Fords who live on 72 Fire Road 12, their house is within 10 feet of the road, so.
So there are a few that are that close.
There's quite a few.
I'm going to ask Hans if he would agree.
Yeah, so are those the neighbors that are before you or after you?
They're after us, but then Ann, who's before us, is also within 15 feet of the road.
Right, and then Gordon and Scott, who are before us, they, they have much more of a setback.
They have a little bit more of a setback, but most of the houses are close to the road.
I would, I would say that that's consistent. I mean, it's, it's, the reason I, I really don't have an issue with it is because of where the, where they're sitting on top of it and where they have the stakes coming out. I don't think it's any more, you know, substantial or it degrades from the, from the bylaw, from where your neighbors are, how your neighbors are situated now.
Yeah.
That's, that's an important part of a dimensional variation, is the fact that it, the proposed building alteration was compatible with the existing neighborhood.
I think it would.
That was put in there because a lot of homes, a lot of streets, and especially when you get around lakes.
Yeah.
You have very small lots that were originally cut up for camps that become year-round homes. So a lot of stuff is very limited today around the lakes and different areas, and that's kind of why they, I think they put this section actually into the bylaw was to give relief in situations like this. Is there anything else you'd like to add at all? All set?
Anything come to mind, Tom?
I think we're all set.
I think we've covered.
Okay. Just one other question. I just see in the back you were talking about a deck removing and replacing.
A deck.
Conutubes, deck footing is necessary. What's the deck in the back?
Oh, that wouldn't happen for a while. That wouldn't happen for a while. I mean, our deck is all set for now.
Okay, I was just wondering why you had put that. This was probably from something else?
It was.
It might have been, yeah.
Yeah, this map was for a retaining wall system that we put in, and that we, we did replace the footings on the, the deck at that time that we went to wall up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just one last question, Mr. Chairman. So the plan that we have, the stamped plan that you have for the retaining wall in the back has been built?
Yes.
Yes.
And you're just using the plans from that to take your dimensions on the addition?
Yes.
And one last question. So it looks like you, is it true that you only have 696 square feet of living space?
Yes, it is.
Yes, pretty small.
Very cramped. It's very cramped.
Very cramped. Okay, with that, I will ask if there is any public comment. If anybody would like to comment, they can come up in, to the mic. Nobody from the public? Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, we grant the special permit, dimensional variation with the findings that it doesn't degrade from the existing bylaw. And I think that they, I'd just like the petitioner to submit the actual architectural plans for the record.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, with that, then I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
With that, the special permit is granted. I do have to read just the post-decision on that, special permits. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority of the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. The special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you good luck with your new addition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You do have to comply with the other boards, which as Lisa had read, you have to go to the conservation.
Yes.
We do have to meet with...
It's on the building committee application, we'll have to do it. Board of Health.
And the Board of Health, so with that, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, your name, your last name was?
Raboin, R-A-B-O-I-N.
And you'll get me a copy of that plan, the original?
What's that?
I think we need a copy of what you're...
I mean, if you need to make a copy and get it to me, that's fine.
Okay.
That big plan?
That big plan, yeah.
You have an extra one tonight?
Um, do we have, Yabbi, do we have an extra big plan so we can give this to her?
Just have the one, and you should just make a copy.
Make a copy of that.
Okay, I could call GPR and have them have a copy of it. Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not quite following anything.
I think we have one small thing I'd like to talk about. We had talked about possibly lowering the, the new basement floor a foot to 18 inches, and I thought I heard some, some reading about it being level with the existing floors there now.
That's what I...
No. Yeah, I saw that. I believe that that was part of this application. They did say that the floor height of the addition would be the same as the existing. I, doesn't make any difference to me how low you want to go.
Where was it?
And now I saw it in there somewhere. I'd have to find it now, but...
I don't believe it affects anything.
Well, it doesn't...
Oh, no, no, right, exactly, no.
Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Happy New Year.
I actually believe that was one of the ramses.
Both need to go over the net.
Sad part about it is I think it's halfway over, right? 18, it could be out. Yeah, it's almost over, halfway.
Halfway to what?
My nine-year-old, right, so I get another nine years. That's how I measure things now, it's, you know.
Uh-huh.
It's kid time.
So you wait until he's 18, that's why he's halfway?
Yeah, exactly.
It could be 21, so you might have to restart that clock. I thought I saw that in there. Doesn't make any difference.
Okay, I believe it's eight o'clock, so we can proceed with the next application. Again, first I'll have to...
Come closer.
Yeah, come closer. You don't have to come up yet, I do have a little bit of reading to do, but you just want to... Okay, I'll give you the ZBA hearing procedure. I have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over Lunenburg public access. I'd like to introduce you to the members of the board. This is Lisa Normandin, Board Secretary. I'm Al Gravel. Jim Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, and Robert Cadel. The way it will happen, proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You'll please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There'll be a public comment period. Again, if anyone would like to speak from the public, come forward, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. The board will then go into deliberation. This is a special permit that vary dimensional requirements, so the findings are, the permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is in appropriate location for such building or alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish the available light, air, sunlight, and other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. With that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
Yes, this is an application for a special permit for dimensional variation, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Scott Reinhardt, 52 Pearl Street in Lunenburg. The under sign hereby petitions as follows. Construction of a carport within the buffer zone of a property line. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 8321B4. The street address of the property is 52 Pearl Street. Assessors Map 122, Parcel 33. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Scott Thomas Reinhardt, 52 Pearl Street in Lunenburg, Mass. And the deed is recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 8042, page 89, and recorded 11/25. Nope, and the last number's cut off. What year? Did you buy the house?
Yeah, 11. I think 11.
11, okay. Sorry about that, it just cut off on my sheet here. The special permit questions are as follows. Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The proposed addition of a carport will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons. It will still allow at least a 12-foot right-of-way for vehicle passage. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? B, the addition of this proposed carport will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood. It will add a finished look to the property and prevent potential tree damage to cars in the driveway. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? C, the proposed addition of a carport will be maintained in an orderly fashion since it is in open use and will be used to cover cars in the driveway. D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of the property? D, there will be no noise, vibration, dust, odor, heater, glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property due to the proposed addition of this carport. It will face one neighbor's open end, open land space, the other neighbor's wall of bushes, and cannot be seen from the third neighbor's home. And that's signed December 1, 2017 by Scott Reinhardt of 52 Pearl Street. A letter from the building, the building commissioner is as follows. Mr. Reinhardt is requesting a special permit to construct a freestanding carport. The carport will be approximately 1.6 feet from the layout of the right-of-way to Pearl Street. The right-of-way provides frontage for the parcel. A minimum of 40-foot setback would be required. The proposed carport will also be 1.5 feet from a side yard where six feet is required. A special permit for dimensional variation to both, for both side, front and side yard will be required prior to a building permit. And that's dated, well, it's not dated. That was from Gary Rhodes to the Board of Appeals. A list of abutters is attached, a site plan from the abutters, from the Lunenburg assessors is attached. There is a memo from the neighbor residing at 48 Pearl Street giving his approval for the carport within the close proximity to his property line. Glenn Reinhardt of 53 Pearl Street, adjacent to 52 Pearl Street, gives Scott Reinhardt permission to construct a carport within close proximity to his property line. Robert Lane of 41 Pearl Street, adjacent to 52 Pearl Street, gives Scott Reinhardt permission to construct a carport within close proximity to the property line. And the, Mr. Reinhardt did get a finding of fact in a negative determina, determination of applicability on October 18th from the Lunenburg Conservation Commission. There is also a rendering of what the carport is going to look like, and I did, and some photographs were attached. I did receive a memo from the fire chief that will let the applicant explain according to the chairman, and I received a memo from the Lunenburg Board of Health Agent, Jim Giriffey, which you all have. This office has reviewed the zoning Board of Appeals paperwork for the proposal at 52 Pearl Street. The sewage disposal system for this house was installed in 1999. At some point after the issuance of a certificate of compliance and without the approval of the Lunenburg Board of Health, a retaining wall was constructed around the leaching area. Based on the certified plot plan attached with the ZBA paperwork and lack of approval from the Board of Health, the above-mentioned sewage disposal system is no longer considered in compliance with Title V. The proposed construction would not appear to change the existing noncompliant condition but may further complicate the installation of a replacement leaching area. I cannot recommend the construction of the carport. And that was dated today from Jim Giriffey, agent from the Lunenburg Board of Health. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And I would invite the applicant up to speak to his application.
So I'm Scott Reinhardt, property owner at 52 Pearl Street in Lunenburg, Mass. And I'm looking to construct a carport. There's a tree that has been causing considerable damage to my vehicles, and the Conservation Commission did not want the tree taken down, so I'm proposing a carport. Unfortunately, the property is only 40 feet wide, so getting anything built there is narrow, to say the least.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, the carport is simply a roof. There are no sides to it. I'm Glenn Reinhardt, 53 Pearl Street. I'm actually the only one beyond the right-of-way past his, Scott's property, so any, any effect on vehicle passage would be on access to my property, and I don't see any effect to that.
Okay.
I guess, should we address the letter from the Health Department as well?
I, yeah, if you would like, you can address both the, the letter from the Health Department and also the, the fire.
So the fire chief came down this afternoon. He, he looked at the proposal laid out on the ground, had no concerns with it, and gave my approval, gave his approval to me.
And I think you have something from the fire department stating that same.
I reassessed the location of the proposed carport today at 3:15. He indicated that the original submitted drawings were not accurate. Mr. Reinhardt had marked out, marked out the actual dimensions of the carport on site. After reviewing these markings, I no longer have an issue with access to 53 Pearl Street. I did explain to Mr. Reinhardt that the carport may still restrict access to his driveway slash home for large vehicles. He understood that he, he indicated that he understood the potential risk. Respectfully, Patrick A. Sullivan, Fire Chief.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Yes, there's one slight variation with the drawing in that they forgot to account for the pitch of the roof and the overall dimension, so it, it... for the pitch of the roof and the overall dimension, so it brings it another six to eight inches back from the road.
Okay.
And I'm also talking with him about possibly cutting off one of the corners since there's an overhang to give more access to vehicles, and that will be determined when it's being built.
Okay, and you met with him today, according to the letter?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And did you want to address the Board of Health?
When I bought the property, I had a Title V done. I bought it from my dad, Glenn Reinhardt, and I have approved Title V with no concerns on it, and that was in 2011. Whatever wall was put up was done previously to either one of us buying the property.
Okay.
It also states that it's...
Not sure you'd have to check with the Board of Health, but I believe the only issue is if you had a problem, you'd have to tear down the wall.
Correct. It doesn't say that we shouldn't build it, it just says it might cause future problems, and if I'm gonna be tearing that down, I'm tearing the wall down and redoing the wall because it's...
Which means that if it ever came to that point and we allowed it, you would probably have to tear down the carport.
That's fine.
That's understood.
I understand that. That's not a problem to me.
All right. Okay, then at that, I will open up to the board. Any questions?
No, I think the fire chief has gone down and reconsidered things. It makes a little different situation.
Yes, there's a 10-foot right-of-way for the road, and at a minimum, even with snowpiles and whatnot, we're looking at close to 13 and a half feet.
We even measured the fire truck, and mirror to mirror, it's 9.6, so we figured it would get down.
Yeah, it's a tight, I mean, I went down there, it's a tight spot. My big concern was reading the Board of Health, but I mean, if you bought the property as is without, you know, you didn't construct the wall.
No, that's been there for...
I think that, for me, was a noncompliance issue with the Title V.
Again, I think the only effect would be that if they had issued a half, tear the wall down.
Right. I mean, the 1.6 feet to the right-of-way, I mean, that's, you know, that's slim, but I mean, you only have one abutter, and it seems to be your dad, and he doesn't, you know.
And when we went down for the fire chief, we measured again, and again, that 1.6 was calculated based on the drawing, which didn't account for the pitch.
Yeah.
Which means it's actually back almost a foot, so it's almost two and a half feet.
Because your six by six posts are set in...
They're inset, and that's...
So it's not like right on the corner of the 1.6.
No, it'd be nine and a half feet off the ground before you'd be close to anything.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I guess the retaining wall that everybody's talking about, that's the one you're gonna put the end of the roof of the carport on?
Yes.
All right, so obviously if something had to happen to it, the carport's coming down, the wall's coming down.
Absolutely.
You realize that?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make that perfectly clear.
No, I understand.
All right, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Robert?
Yeah, just curious, since what you're doing for drainage here, it looks like it drains right onto your house.
Drains right into the retaining wall. There's gravel already there. It'll be draining into the gravel, and there's grass behind that.
The Conservation Commission actually thought that was better, since it's not going out into the lake, it's actually going down through the, so water would...
Car, driveway, pools and those in the lake.
That water was actually getting put back into the soil first before going directly into the lake.
One other quick question, Mr. Chairman. So that, the tree that's causing all the issues, where's that on the plot plan?
It's actually on my neighbor's property.
It's on your neighbor's, okay.
Yeah, he said dig an ax to it. I said, it's not how this works.
Whatever portion of the tree hangs over your property you can cut down.
Well, that'd be almost all of it.
That's the law, though.
Well, the Conservation Commission wouldn't approve that, unfortunately, because it's within the buffer zone.
Well, they prefer that that not come down.
Yeah. What kind of tree is it?
A big one.
Because it's got...
Drops the acorns.
Acorns are going from a great height, and they've been denting several of his cars, and a branch fell and tore up a...
Put a hole through my BMW top.
Yeah.
I understand, I've had that same issue. Any more questions? Excuse me. You said your property, how deep is it? 40 feet?
The width is 40 feet.
Width, 40 feet, yeah, it's pretty narrow.
It's two tent sugs.
I think as some of the other board, normally I would have a concern with somebody that was, is supposed to have 40 feet and you've got two feet or two and a half feet or whatever it is, that would be a big issue, but in this particular case, I can see why you have to do what you have to do.
Thank you.
And you fully understand the consequences of...
Yes, sir.
The carport. So with that, I would ask the public if they would like to speak and address the issue whatsoever. And with nobody from the public wishing to speak, I will ask for a motion from the board.
Can I change my mind and ask another question about, what do you do with snow there? What do you do with snow there? Or what are you, what are you going to do with the...
A lot of it goes onto my property.
Yeah, I throw it to the neighbors. He normally actually takes care of it when I'm at work, but I throw it up on the grass or on the sides.
Oh, do you plow it or snow blow?
Mostly.
We snow blow and plow, and the town doesn't, that hole from that turn at the top, the town doesn't come down that. That's up to me, and so I do that.
I was just thinking with a plow, I could see someone hitting one of those wooden posts.
The posts are inset, actually.
They're inset several feet.
It's cantilevered, so they'd hit a car first. And, yeah, we snow blow that for the most part, and him or I are the ones plowing, because no one else goes down that far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Another motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the special permit for dimensional variation. I think it was the two, the two dimensions that the applicant's looking for. One is the front and side yard setbacks, and that the finding is that it's not more degradating from the environment.
I'll second.
Second, and we have a motion in a second?
Second.
We'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. With that, it's approved?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your carport.
Thank you.
You have some post-reading I have to do. The permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without... That's the wrong one, hold on. Okay, post-decision. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes and ordinances of any and all applicable local, state and federal boards or agencies with jurisdictions over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days